Welcome. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Kettering City Council. Today's date is May 23, 2023. Please stand for Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we move on, I'd like to recognize our Miami Valley Communication Council TV operator, Mike Saperoni. Mike, thank you for your assistance. Mr. Duke and Mr. Scott both have excused absences this evening. At this point, I'd like to call upon Mrs. Fisher for a motion to approve the minutes.
Your Honor, I have reviewed both the council meeting and workshop minutes for May the 9th, and I do find them in order, and I move for their approval.
Second.
Okay, the motion's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, call the roll.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner.
I inadvertently skipped over the invocation, so I will now read that. Dear Lord, thank you for all who serve the Kettering community. Give us enthusiasm for our work and wisdom to make the right decisions. May we remain humble and grateful for the opportunity to lead. Guide this council so that we may continue to serve our citizens with integrity and purpose, always remembering to be worthy of the responsibilities entrusted in us by our residents. Okay, we have a brief agenda tonight. We will first start with proclamations and special presentation. We have a proclamation for Police Memorial Week, and Mr. Kleipass, could you read that for us?
Sure. Thank you, Your Honor. I have a proclamation this evening. Whereas the Congress of the United States of America has designated the week of May 14, 2023 through May 20, 2023, to be dedicated as National Police Week, which pays tribute to all the men and women who have fallen in the line of duty. And whereas during this week, several Kettering police officers honored the fallen by participating in the Montgomery County Law Enforcement Memorial, Kettering Police Memorial, and presented colors at the May 9, 2023 city council meeting. And whereas every year during this week, the Kettering Police Department pays tribute to our own fallen officer, Paul Metzger, with a memorial in his honor at Lincoln Park Civic Commons. And whereas the citizens of Kettering continue to honor the valor and dedication of the Kettering Police Department by displaying blue exterior lights throughout the community. Now therefore, Peggy Lehner, Mayor of the City of Kettering, Ohio, on behalf of city council and the community, does hereby proclaim May 14 through the 20, 2023, to be Police Memorial Week in the City of Kettering, Ohio, and urges all citizens to thank the men and women who worked continuously to protect our community. Signed this 23rd day of May, 2023, Mayor Peggy Lehner.
Thank you, Mr. Kleipass. And receiving the proclamation will be Chief Protsman.
Thank you very much. And I'm sure the next.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We always greatly appreciate when people take the time to remember those that have fallen in this profession. Certainly a sad state of affairs when we see that the violence against police officers is rising in this country. It's nice to see that there are people still out there who do care and recognize that. So as far as the Kettering Police Department, I can tell you that this year's been a very busy one for them, and I just can't tell you how much I appreciate the grace and the professionalism that they have shown during very tragic and difficult calls that they've been on. So thank you very much. We greatly appreciate your support as well.
Thank you so much, Chief. We now will have a proclamation for EMS Week, and receiving this one will be Chief Robbins. And please sit.
Whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas emergency medical services have grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine, and whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas the members of emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills, the Greater Miami Valley EMS Council has provided protocol and training throughout the region for over 50 years. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week, now therefore, Peggy Lehner, Mayor of the City of Kettering, Ohio, on behalf of city council and the community, does hereby proclaim May 21 through the 27, 2023, to be Emergency Medical Services Week in the City of Kettering, Ohio, and urges all citizens to recognize the importance of all emergency medical services and thank those professionals who are working to keep our community safe and healthy.
Thank you very much. Chief? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor Lehner, Council. On behalf of the men and women of Kettering Fire Department, we appreciate this proclamation recognizing National EMS Week. EMS or Emergency Medical Services is 80% of the functionality of the Kettering Fire Department. It's 80% of our operations, and all 80 operational members of Kettering Fire Department are paramedics. So as the proclamation also stated, we work in conjunction with great cooperation with Kettering Police Department doing EMS operations and our public safety dispatchers. So we'd like to take the time to recognize them and thank them for their services as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chief.
For all your guys, both fire and police, we're very lucky. At this point, we have a presentation. We're always happy to welcome our Montgomery County Auditor, Carl Keith, and you're going to make a presentation this evening. Take it away.
Thank you very much, Mayor Lehner, members of councils, Mr. Manager, staff. Appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this evening and give a presentation about a preview of coming attractions, I guess, from this summer, when we will be updating property values throughout Montgomery County. I have with me tonight Mike Brill, who's our Communications and Community Engagement Manager, and also Dorian Buford, who is our Communications Specialist. And this is Dorian's second day on the job and his first day out in the community, so...
He's working overtime.
Yeah, we're glad to welcome him. Glad to welcome him. Again, thank you for the opportunity. This is an update year for us, and so that always is an exciting time. And so just to remind you that every auditor in the state is required to update property values once every six years to do a complete revaluation. Midway through that six-year cycle, they're required to do a market update. So we are basically updating property values once every three years. And people will say, "Well, I think you just did this." And we did just do this in 2020, so this is our year to update values. Now, not every county is on the same cycle, but we are on the same cycle with Green County to the east and with Butler County to the south. So there are some others who are joining us in this endeavor. In fact, there are 41 counties across the state who will be doing updates this year one fashion or another. So just again, just to remind you of 2020, when we, the last time we had a countywide revaluation, that we did increase property values in 2020 by about $3.5 billion. It crossed the $30 billion mark for us. It allowed us to recover most of the value that we lost during the Great Recession. We lost about $3.5 billion during the Great Recession, so we were able to recover most of that last time, and now we will move beyond that this time. Again, just to remind you, Kettering results, values in Kettering, residential values in Kettering in 2020 increased by more than 17%. Kettering, the jurisdiction was, had the largest growth, had the most growth of any community in Montgomery County. The last time we did an update, it gained more than $500 million in value, which was 15% of the total county-wide gain. So it was a good year for the City of Kettering. We expect this year to be a good year for the City of Kettering. So this is a triennial update, and when we do a triennial update, it's a market update. So we don't send appraisers in the field to do visual inspections of homes. We don't update our images. We don't redo flyovers. So it's basically a market update based on valid real estate sales and looking at those real estate sales primarily in 2022, and developing sales ratios by comparing those sales to what values we currently have on our books. Now, the real estate market has been incredibly robust, so you can imagine what that means. So when people ask us, "Well, what determines a property's market value?" Well, the characteristics of the property, how many bedrooms with square footage, how old the house, the construction, property characteristics are important. Location is important. The old real estate adage applies, location, location, location. But for our purposes, the primary driving factor will be valid real estate sales, valid sales of subject properties or valid sales of comparable properties throughout the different neighborhoods. We are expecting record-setting rise in property values this year based upon how active and how robust the real estate market has been. In fact, just to show this is charts, valid real estate sales throughout Montgomery County over the last several years. As you can see, 2021 was our record year, almost 13,000 valid sales. The sales, the number of sales dipped a little bit in '22, but 10,500, if it hadn't been for '21, 10,500 would have been a record year for us. So I mean, it's still a very healthy year. And I also put in there the headline, I don't know if you can read it, but this was a headline back in 2020, when the governor declared stay-at-home an emergency because of the pandemic, because of COVID, and had issued a stay-at-home order. The real estate industry was considered a vital industry, and so we continued to see real estate transactions and process real estate transactions in my office. Throughout that entire time, we were transferring 70, 80, 90, 100 properties a day, every day, five days a week. We ended up having to come in the weekends and in the evenings to keep up with it. So the market, even during COVID, even during the pandemic, has been remarkably active. So we track those sales and track them, did they sell for amounts over our current value or under our current value? So of those 10,000 sales in 2022, 83% of them sold for more than we have them valued, only 17% sold for less than we have them valued. Again, something that is driving a rise in values overall. Specifically, Kettering sales, you see in 2022, a slight drop from the previous two years, but still over 1,000 sales in the City of Kettering, again indicative of a very healthy market. And of those 1,000 sales, 88% of them sold for more than we currently have them valued. So that means we're going to see a rise in values this year. Just to show you how, because I know the news media has been saying things like the market has been, is in decline, or that the market is plummeting, and they're referring to the fact that the number of sales has declined, and that's true, but the price for property has continued to grow. This was from the Dayton Daily News Real Estate section. You know, it's kind of an occupational hazard of mine. I check out the real estate section every Sunday to see what properties are selling for. And so this is just an example of Kettering properties. As you can see, one sold for 87% more, and this is, these were properties that sold just a few weeks ago, that closed just a few weeks ago. One for 87% more, 67, 63, 33, 44. The market continues to, prices continue to grow and show signs of incredible growth. If you talk to realtors, they'll tell you they've never seen anything like this before, and not just here in Montgomery County, but throughout Ohio and throughout the country. So we have received a recommendation from the Tax Commissioner for this year. The Tax Commissioner is recommending an aggregate increase in property values of 37%. And that's for residential and then 13% for commercial. And yes, we have never seen any kind of number like that before. That's an aggregate number. It's a recommendation, but it gives us some idea of what the Tax Commissioner is looking at and is expecting as we move forward. There are 13 other counties that are doing this this year, 12 other counties that are doing a triennial update. Of those, the average recommended increase has been 34%. We're at 37. There's a couple of counties in there that are in the 40s, the recommendation's in the 40s. So again, we are not alone, and this is something that's occurring all across the state, all across the country, really. So our, right now, what we are projecting increase is somewhere between 25 and 40% depending on the community. We think an average countywide increase of 30-plus. We don't think we'll be at 37. We think we'll be more like 33, 34. We're continuing to work through the numbers, but that's what we anticipate that we're going to turn into the state. But that number is by far at twice or more than anything that I've ever seen during my time as auditor. This is our schedule, so we are trying to finalize what we can submit to the Tax Commissioner. We're hoping to get our tentative numbers to the Tax Commissioner by, either by the end of this month or the first week in June. So we're getting very close to being final. Met with some of our folks today, going over some of the numbers, so we are very close. The Tax Commissioner will review those numbers, and if we get approval, we will be sending notices out to every property owner in the county, informing them of those tentative new values. So we expect to be doing that hopefully in July and August, and giving them an opportunity then to have an informal review. If they have questions or issues or concerns, they can do what we call an informal review with members of my team and kind of work through what any of their questions or issues, and make final adjustments to submit to the Tax Commissioner in the fall. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I have one.
Sure.
Am I correct in that the great big smile that goes on everyone's face when they hear of the valuation of their house gets wiped out very quickly when they see their tax bill?
Well, that can be true, yes. So the first thing I think we always like to point out is a 37% or whatever percent increase in value does not equate to a 37% increase in taxes. That is, there is not a one-to-one correlation between tax and value. The State of Ohio has mechanisms in place to prevent that from happening, to prevent large inflationary increases from impacting people's final tax bill. Now, that's not to say that people will not, won't see their taxes go up, because they will, but it won't be in the 37% level.
Right.
Do you have an estimate? Do you have any kind of estimation of what percentage property taxes?
See, I always, I avoid that question because it gets me into trouble, and I'll explain why. Keep in mind that there are 97 different tax districts in Montgomery County, and so that means there are 97 different tax rates, both residential and then 97 different tax rates, commercial. So between now and next year, depending what kind of levies maybe appear on the ballot and get approved, what kind of new construction goes, gets added to the rolls, it's very difficult for us to give a real accurate answer as to what the tax burden would be until we, that is all finalized until we get into December. I've tried to give some ideas and tried to give some estimates. It always gets me into trouble because people, you know, we're being recorded, right? I mean, people write these things down, and then you say, "Well, you know, you told the Kettering City Council it was going to be this." And so I really hesitate to say what it could be because there's a lot of factors that could change between now and next year. I can tell you that it's going to be, it won't be 37% increase. Some people will see, some people will actually see their tax bill go down. It's just the way the mathematics of all of this works.
In the spirit of continuing to not get you in trouble, that mathematical equation, is that established by your office or by the state?
Well, if I understand your question correctly, it's a function of a lot of different things. It's a function of, the tax rate itself is set by the voters. So it's a function of what levies have been approved by the voters and what kind of levies were approved and how that mixes in between the different taxing districts they're in. The state sets, does do the, determines the reduction factors, and they do give us the final tax rate to apply to everyone's tax bill, but that's based upon what voters have approved in terms of a tax rate.
Yeah. I'm interested in that equation between the 37%, which is great for homeowners, and what that property tax bill is going to look like ultimately.
Yeah. Yeah. Again, when we say 37%, that's a recommendation from the state. We think it will get it approved at something less than that, and that is a county-wide average. We have something like 1,200 neighborhoods throughout the county, so that rate is going to vary widely between those neighborhoods. And again, it's an average, so some people are going to see their rates go up, you know, or their value go up in the 40s. Some people will see their value go up much less than that. Some people will see their value go down. So it's a wide range, and that's why it's really difficult for me to say specifically until we have all the numbers in.
We know we cannot, neither give you the credit or the blame. You're not the one, but you're the one that has to stand here in front of us. You do a wonderful job, Carl, and I really appreciate everything you do.
I would just like to say this, and I know that the tax consequences is a concern, particularly for those of us who, those who are already shouldering a pretty heavy burden, and so I get that. But you know, I've been the auditor now for a long time, and I lived through the recession period, and I saw that period where people's value, we lowered people's values by 30% and 40%, some as much as 50%. That was very difficult. That was heart-wrenching. I had people tell me, you know, "I've lost all the equity in my home. My home's now not even worth what I paid for 20 years ago." So those were difficult times to go through, and so I know there are tax consequences with this, but this is really good news for the community. The real estate industry is a huge economic engine, and what we're seeing going on is really meaning that the community is growing, and we're growing in wealth in certain, some segments better than others, some segments better than others, but it's certainly a sign of strength in our community, and I think overall, it's good news.
It is.
Now, you've, you know, when the tax bill comes next week, next year, you'll say, "Well, I don't know if I agree with you, Carl," but... Again, thank you so much for the opportunity. Any other questions?
I don't think so.
There'll be more to say about this.
Don't take anything personally.
I don't. I don't. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Carl. Thanks for coming.
Okay. We have no public hearings this evening, and this is the point in the agenda, however, if anyone would like to come down and make a comment about any of the legislation before us today, we don't have any legislation in front of us, except for that one. I was going to say the one, but anyone wishing to speak before council with comments or new information about that piece of legislation on tonight's agenda may do so at this time. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. Speakers must state their name and address. Comments should be addressed to council. If you have comments that are not about the legislation on tonight's agenda, there will be an opportunity for those to be heard later in the evening. Anyone wish to make a comment? Okay, we'll move on. Ordinances and second reading. We have no ordinances and second reading tonight. We do have a resolution, however, for Mrs. Fisher to introduce.
I do, Your Honor. I have a resolution authorizing the completion of the Ohio Department of Transportation Project MOT 48-6.49, PID 111571, within the City of Kettering, and authorizing the city manager to enter into one or more related contracts with ODOT. The estimated cost and budget both are $540,000, and it's requested by the Engineering Department, and I move for its approval.
Second.
Okay. Did you wish to speak on this, Mr. Grayson?
Mayor, I'd be glad to, and if you'd like me to talk slowly so that you can have a longer meeting than the agenda requires, I'd be glad to. No, thank you for considering this or discussing this one piece of legislation. So the Ohio Department of Transportation has a program called the Urban Paving Program, and this project relates to that, certain eligible roads in communities. ODOT will perform the work on them with a local match. So in this case, they will complete a resurfacing project in late 2024, early 2025, on Far Hills Avenue, State Route 48, and the project limits will extend from Enid Avenue to just south of David Road. It will include what we call a mill and fill of asphalt pavement, and the way the project will break down between state and local funds would be urban paving program funds of about $430,000 with a local match of approximately $110,000. Be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions? No questions? No one from the audience wanted to talk about it? Let's call the roll.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes. Okay. We have no ordinances and first reading tonight. Ms. Kaczynski, do we have any certifications or petitions?
Your Honor, we do not have any certifications or petitions this evening.
Okay. We will then move on to the manager's report and his community update.
Yes, Your Honor. I am pleased to just highlight a few things coming to the FRAZE this summer, certainly not inclusive of all the wonderful concerts and events that are happening in our community at that location, but here's a few. Get the lead out Wednesday, August 16th, always popular if you're a Led Zeppelin fan. Country singer Clint Black on Saturday, August 26, 8:00 p.m. And Gin Blossoms on Wednesday, September 6. On the screen before you are all the ways that you can purchase tickets at the FRAZE, and we certainly encourage people to come out and enjoy concerts and events at one of our community's treasures this summer. The Kettering Neighborhood Pride Program honors residents and businesses who have made significant improvements to their homes and maintain their properties in an impeccable manner year after year. These are the special houses in the neighborhood that everybody wants theirs to look like. If you are interested in nominating a neighbor, please visit the website or call the volunteer office on the number on the screen. We certainly want to recognize Kettering neighbors who are doing an excellent job maintaining their property. I have an aquatic family, so I'm particularly excited about the opening of our Adventure Reef Water Park this summer. The 2023 season starts this Saturday, May 27, and on the screen before you are the 2023 water park hours for Monday through Saturday, 12 to 5. Non-residents, 12:30 to 5:00 p.m., and Sundays, passholders and Kettering residents. Non-residents, twelve-thirty to five p.m., and Sundays, passholders and Kettering residents only twelve to five p.m. We're certainly excited about giving people the opportunity to get in the water this summer. On Memorial Day, just a quick reminder, city offices will be closed Monday, May twenty-ninth in observance of this important national holiday, and rumpkey trash pickup will be delayed by one day. The Memorial Day Ceremony on May twenty-ninth will be at ten a.m. at Beaver Town Cemetery, which is three-one-seven-zero Valleywood Drive. Parking will be available at Blessed Hope Baptist Church, and the American Legion Post five-ninety-eight Honor Guard will honor the fallen, and the community is welcome to come and pay homage. Just a quick reminder that we have a joint school board meeting next Tuesday. If you thought you had a Tuesday off, you don't, and we're glad to have the opportunity to meet with our partners at the schools. They are hosting, and the meeting will be in the boardroom at the Board of Education Offices at five-hundred Lincoln Park Drive. And I know that I am excited to participate in my first Kettering block party at Lincoln Park and FRAZE Pavilion on May thirty-first from six to eight, and looking forward to seeing each of you there, and many of our depart, departments will have information and tables out to greet the public. One of the ways neighbors get together in Kettering is to have block parties, and we certainly encourage those. It's a terrific way to meet and get acquainted with your neighbors. If a neighborhood, a street, is interested in having a block party, on the screen here before you is the way that you can download a block party request form, and people can view this, do that, the city's website, or call the engineering department. We would be glad to help you. Bring your kids to touch a truck, or come yourself if any of you want to touch the trucks, Saturday, June third. Some of our great equipment, we'll have a variety of trucks there, construction vehicles, public safety vehicles, and more. Take pictures and enjoy experiencing some of the things you don't always get to have in your, in your driveway, and see the big trucks that city government and others get to operate. And lastly, and importantly, there is a free summer food program for children ages zero to eighteen, June fifth through August seventh, noon to two p.m. Monday, Wednesday, and Friday at Trails of Oak Creek in the parking lot there, and Tuesdays and Thursdays at the Van Buren Park Shelter. Volunteers from throughout our community are helping provide lunch to children who need access to quality food during the summer. We're excited to be a part of this program, and we certainly encourage people to come out. Your Honor, that is all I have today.
Thank you, Mr. Grayson. There's a lot going on in the next few weeks, it seems like. If there's anyone in the audience at this point who would like to speak before city council, please come down to the podium. Each speaker will have a five-minute limit. Speakers are asked to state their name and address. Is there anyone who would like to speak before city council? Nobody does. We will now move on to city council reports. Taryn, would you like to get up and talk a little bit about?
Not on your second day on the job. So, I'm going to send and add a girl over to Ms. Duval. The Kettering Leadership Academy graduation was awesome, and I will say, the, I'm sure you'll talk more about it, but Bruce's legacy with, with the larger project at hand was, was awesome, and so that was a very great event. And add a girl to Ms. Hall. I did pop out to the grocery store. Good or bad news, I had to wait in line because there were so many people that were there to make some purchases at the mobile grocery store. So, that was awesome. But more importantly, I don't know whether I insulted or complimented, the gentleman gave me this flyer for people that are over sixty, and I'm not over sixty for the record, which is free produce, anybody. It is not, doesn't matter how much money you make or don't make.
I'm over sixty. I'll take it. Thank you.
Fifty dollars worth of free produce. You get a five-dollar ticket, and you do it every week, and so, what a great deal. And so, for those residents that are listening to our meeting, I encourage you to pop over there on the second and the fourth, Wednesday, between two and four, and pick up your senior farmer's market application.
Say where it is.
Oh, it's on Renee Drive, at the Trails of Oak Creek. We were just talking about the Trails. It's right there in the same parking lot that we serve the summer lunches. And last but not least, I have a public service announcement, and when you were talking about the FRAZE tickets, my sister received a buy your tickets early, and it happened to be one of our FRAZE events, and it was not etix.com. And I will tell you, that is the only official website for the FRAZE tickets. So, if you get something that's other than the etix, you might be getting spammed. So, just a little public service announcement. So, I have, Your Honor.
Thank you. Mr. Kleipas?
Okay. Thank you, Your Honor. Most of us attended the police memorial ceremony on May the eleventh at the, at the Plaza. Thanks again, Chief. Do this every year. It's always a touching event. It's always well-attended, and we had great weather this year, too, so you never know what you might, might have there. Great way to kick off the Police Week and all the activities associated with that. On May the twelfth, we always like ribbon cuttings. This wasn't a new business, but it was a business of town and country, Bath and Body Works. They moved east in the shopping center to make more room on the west side for a bigger, new, larger business that's coming soon. So, the store looked pretty much the same, but really, really in good shape over there.
Good sales.
Then on, on, on May the thirteenth, after several years' absence, Mayor Lehner kicked off a new event called the Mayor's Party. In former years, it was the Mayor's Ball, but this year started up again. I think what, you'll probably talk more about it. I think there was full house there Saturday night and raised a lot of funds for a local nonprofit, Bridget's Path. Bridget's Path, when they first opened, were the, was the only one in the country. Now, there's five people copying them, and I thought that was pretty interesting that that was mentioned. Last night, the Sister City Committee met and were deep into plans on the Spasnak that's coming up on June twenty-first, and I need all of you to volunteer to work in different booths over there, so y'all got a message on that. That's coming up June twenty-first. And words of wisdom for shopping local, good things come to those who shop locals. So, that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Tony.
Thanks for the reminder. I also just, of those events, one that I went to was your party with a purpose last week, weekend? Excellent. Really good time. Cannot wait for it next year, and a new record for raising money, I think. I won't steal your thunder and say how much, but impressive, really good event. Also found out next week that we have a whole bunch of Ukraine residents in Kettering that I did not know about. Thirty-eight students at Kettering College that were able to be taken out of the conflict zones in, in many cases, but were struggling with options, with places to stay, who got scholarships to come to Kettering College. I didn't know that. So, thirty-eight students, got to meet some of them last week, and in, I also bring that up because they will be at another event for Ukraine. University of Dayton has two art exhibits for Ukraine right now on Ukraine religious art, and was very honored to be invited to be the speaker for this event on June seventh at four p.m. And the speech is going to be about the importance of preserving Ukrainian culture and what the significance of this art is at this point in time. One of the reasons I brought up Ukraine often is my great-grandfather is from Mariupol, so it stays in my mind, but this community stays in my mind, and we have a lot more people from Kettering than I thought here from Ukraine. Hope you guys can come on June seventh, and anyone else who's listening. Also, there'll be fundraising for Ukraine. That's it.
Thank you, Jill.
Thank you every, to everyone who attended the KLA graduation. As Ms. Fisher said, it was a great, great night. Thank you especially to Mayor Lehner for speaking and to former city manager, Mark Schwederman. The graduating class did an amazing project. They're doing, they're, they've constructed, and they'll be putting in place a free pantry for those who might need a little food, some hygiene items. It's a wonderful, wonderful project. I'm very excited about that, very proud of this class. We were also lucky that we got to announce the Bruce Duke Fellowship Fund, a fund that is in place through the Dayton Foundation to help honor Bruce's legacy and the work he did with the Leadership Academy, and the money will be used to help those who want to attend the Leadership Academy but don't have the funds for it. It keeps it accessible and keeps it moving toward what I think Bruce wants it to be. So, we're very excited about that. I would like to make a deal with Mr. Kleipas. I will volunteer for Spasnak if he shows up at FRAZE two days earlier before that for the Juneteenth Festival on June nineteenth. Are you going to be there? All right. We'll say it's a yes. We are very excited about Juneteenth. The Board of Community Relations is in the home stretch of planning, and we're very excited. One of the vendors I'm most excited about, Chicken Head's Ghost Chicken, or Ghost Kitchen will be there. Dayton Fit Lab, the African-American Visual Arts Guild, and Love Locks will be performing. It's going to be a wonderful, wonderful festival. We hope to see everyone there. And last but not least, when you nominate someone for the Neighborhood Pride Award, also nominate them for the Good Neighbor Award. This award is from the Board of Community Relations, and it's meant to give a little shout-out to the people in your community that do small things for you and don't get that recognition. Maybe they help you shovel your snow or take up your trash cans, small little things that matter. So, you can get an application online on the city's website, ketteringoh.org. That's all I have.
You know, when, when you recognize some of those small things, it's really touching. There was a resident the other day who sent a letter in praising the fact that the street department came along and was putting plugs of grass in where the snow plows had maybe caught it a little bit, and I thought, that was really neat to take the time to call attention to that. There are so many wonderful things going on. There's just like a festival almost every night this month, but hopefully you can make at least one, if not all of them. We did have a wonderful re, what's the word? Reclaiming, restoring the Mayor's Ball, and which was recalled, renamed Mayor's Party with a Purpose because there wasn't a ball. This year, we had piano players dueling pianos, and they did a great job. There were a few rough moments in the event as, you know, something is resurrected and trying to get everything just right, but overall, it was a real smashing success, and we raised, while we haven't done the final audit, and you're welcome to come help, help us, Carl, it's very complicated, but we're looking at upwards of eighty-five thousand dollars was raised for Bridget's Path, which is three times more than we've ever raised before. So, obviously, it was a smashing success, and thanks to everyone who was helped, helped with it. It's a joint project of the city of Kettering and the Kettering Rotary, and thanks to the Rotary for all the help they put into it. They lent the two main chairmen, Missy Mae Walters and Brenda Stanfield, and a number of other volunteers who also worked on the, the same event. So, that, that was really super. Thanks to everyone. One other thing I wanted to mention was that the new portion of the bikeway has now opened up. We had a ribbon cutting for that on Thursday, I think it was Thursday. And so, that's where the, it came up from Centerville and down from Kettering and joined there at Hewitt, and we've, we've got one of the best, best bike paths, the most number of miles anywhere in the country goes right through Kettering. So, we have a lot to be proud of with that bike path. With that, that concludes our meeting for tonight, being no further business to come before city council. Our next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be June thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three, and this meeting is adjourned.